Let me call to order the city council meeting. It's Tuesday, November 22nd at 7:30. Please rise for invocation, followed by a flag. Please.
Lord, it's been an unsettling year for many people in many different directions. But as we enter this time, let us remember to give thanks for those things that we value and that are settled in our lives, both personally, in our communities, in our nation, in our world. Let's, even as we ask questions on how we can make our communities and our nation better, let's remember what is good and what is worth maintaining and celebrating. Keep those who protect us, both at home and abroad, safe and help them to do their jobs in the most effective ways possible. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is approval of city council meeting minutes dated November 10th, 2016. Can I have a motion, a second, to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and those minutes are approved. Next item is limited courtesy of the floor. We've had no request for that this evening, so we'll move to our next item, which is an ordinance and final reading for the community development budget. Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance, 43rd year, 2017, community development budget.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, a second, to approve this ordinance and final reading, please?
So moved.
Second.
Very emotional, second. Mr. Grado, how are you this evening?
Good evening, President Williamson, members of council. This is our 2017 community development budget, which was legally advertised and had the appropriate public hearings, was reviewed by council on first reading at the last meeting, and then the next item, I guess, is the action plan. So really, we speak to the budget has been, was approved on first reading, so.
Okay. Thank you. Comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that ordinance is approved and final reading. Because we have a guest this evening, I'm going to jump down real quick. Mr. Grado is going to present on the certificate of appropriateness, item number 14, from 460 Williams Street. Mr. Grado.
Yes, this certificate of appropriateness for a retail clothing shop that's located at 460 Williams Street. The certificates for the sign for the business called Prime was reviewed by the planning commission at their meeting on November 17th, and they recommended approval. There's a representative here, Zaid Ali, who council has questions. I'm sure he'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, a second, to approve this certificate of appropriateness?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing motion, a second. Comments or questions for members of council? Ms. Mealy?
So this will be a clothing store, 460 West Fourth Street, where precisely?
Well, that's across from the-
Or William Street, excuse me.
Yeah, on William Street. It's, if you know, the entrance that the, it's the church's parking lot that the parking authority operates, and the entrance is just opposite the Genetti's.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And this is the building just to the north of that. There's a small building adjacent to the larger one. This is the smaller building.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, that wasn't where I was picturing, for some reason, but sometimes there aren't numbers on these.
Yeah, I mean, it meets the zoning. I guess the raised letters are going to be right on the existing facade of the shop.
And it's internally illuminated, or?
Oh, no.
Is it illuminated? Even better, awesome.
I don't think they're illuminated. Are they illuminated?
Yeah, no, Jonathan said they're not illuminated. I just, I hadn't read the last part of the sentence. Men's clothing or women's clothing? All right, awesome. That's everything.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that certificate is approved. Before you leave, oh, never mind. Somebody tell him, sorry, that's okay. I was just going to say, congratulations and welcome to downtown businesses.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, sure. Have a good evening. Usually, they love to stick around all the way to the end of the meeting. I don't know why they'd be in such a big rush to get out of here.
They ran.
Must be something good on TV tonight. All right, so that certificate is approved. We'll go back up then to item number six, resolution on the community development action plan. Ms. Frank, please.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Williamsport approving the fiscal year 2017 annual action plan. Whereas, under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended, the Secretary of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development is authorized to extend financial assistance to communities in the elimination or prevention of slums or urban blight or activities which benefit low and moderate income persons or others-
Sorry, Mrs. Frank, I meant to say in short form. Thank you. Can I have a motion, a second, on this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing motion, a second. Mr. Grado.
Yes, this is the action plan, which is coupled with the 2017 budget. It's a requirement to be submitted to HUD. There was a, it describes the activities in length on those budgeted items for 2017. There was a, the appropriate, there was a public needs hearing on September 27th. The action plan was on display for 30 days between October 10th and November 9th. Also was on the city's website and at the public library. The, there was a public hearing on the draft action plan on November 1st. The action plan is a one-year plan, but it's consistent with the city's consolidated plan, which is a five-year plan for 2015 through 2019. Stephanie Young from our office does, you know, presents, prepares this, and she has annually, so, and it was reviewed by the finance committee today, actually.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy, finance.
Technically, it was yesterday, but they all start to blend together this time.
Monday, I'm sorry. Today's Tuesday.
Yes, finance reviewed this and forwarded to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. Not too many notes. I mean, you know, it's mostly sort of a fleshed-out version of the 2017 budget that we just voted on for the second time, and it's, well, perhaps a testament to Ms. Young. It's, it's a pretty remarkable document, and it becomes easy to see why a certain amount of our CDBG budget has to go to administration when we generate a document like this once a year, and a whole bunch of other paperwork related to every item of sort of federal spending that we do. A handful of notes. The allocation, our, both our community development block grant allocation and our home funding have been decreasing almost every year, right, John?
Yes.
And, and so, of course, the entire budget is predicated on what we received last year as an allocation, which could possibly change when we do hear about our new allocation in April. With that in mind, the, the amount of home funding that we're currently receiving is not enough any longer to complete one of the elements of the home program, which is to process one, to have, to aid one homebuyer in purchasing a home annually. Previously, I think we've done, we've obviously done more than one homebuyer in certain years, but now that the home allocation has been reduced so dramatically, we actually have to transfer funds from other elements of CDBG to even do one mortgage aid package annually, which is unfortunate. So some of our discussion yesterday revolved around whether, there isn't particularly anything that we can do about it. I think allocations are decreasing nationwide. It's not just the city that somehow or another receiving less funding. But anyway, just the whole idea of what we're expected to do with the funding that we're receiving and how little, how it doesn't necessarily go far enough there any longer. Otherwise, of course, it was a package that was well put together, and we appreciated all the updates on all the, all the ways in which we're spending our funding, and we passed it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
One comment.
Michelle.
There is, there is a wealth of information in here about our city and, and agencies that deliver services and the coordination of that, so it's, you know, if you have time to sort through some of the things, it gives you a good snapshot of the demographic and groups that CDBG serves and affects. And the other thing is, Mr. Grado pointed out that regulations have increased, so our reporting, there's a lot more that goes into our reporting and our monitoring and having an assessment of each organization that gets the money. So there's, there's more accountability, which is good, but it falls on us to do, well, specifically, it's going to fall on Stephanie Young to, to do the legwork, to interview each of these agencies, keep up with their paperwork, make sure that they're keeping up with the paperwork, and that she's able to process the information that she gets from them, so it can be forwarded back to the federal government. So there's going to be more work on our department, and, you know, that means the more time you spend on something else, the less you have to spend on some other things. So we're going to have to be aware of that and how that might affect operations in general, so.
And just to follow up on that, I think the idea seems to be that this particular funding is sort of a one-size-fits-all sort of thing, so that cities that receive much greater amounts of funding have the same reporting requirements. And you see that in all sorts of areas, especially within the federal government. You know, the, the requirements are the same, whether it's a small business or a large business, or an X or a Y, you know? But it is, when we're talking about subrecipient agreements, which we're just about to see, for $3,000 a pop, it's different from a $250,000 subrecipient agreement in a big city in terms of the impact. But it is what it is, I guess, and we certainly spend the money, so, and we're happy to have it.
Thank you. Any further comments? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank, on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda, actually, the next four items are resolutions authorizing subrecipient agreements. The first one with Fire Tree Place. Mrs. Frank, please.
Resolution authorizing a subrecipient agreement between the City of Williamsport and Fire Tree Place LTD, whereas the city council of the city-
Just as a question, can we do these in short form and package them in a motion?
Okay.
Each individually, okay. Short form is fine. So can I have a motion, a second, on the first?
So moved.
Second.
And, Mr. Grado, you can feel free to describe all four of them at the same time.
I'll discuss all four, since they're all related. These are subrecipient agreements for agencies, as councilman Mealy indicated, were, are part of the 2016 community development block, and block grant budget. These were approved by council for action last year. The first is the Lycoming County SPCA, and the amount of $4,225 for the spay and neutering and microchip program. The second is for Kappa, the Community Alliance for Progressive Positive Action. Kappa conducts the academic after-school program. The YWCA for $3,500 was for the, is for the city PACs for the homeless, and Fire Tree Place, 600 Campbell Street, for $3,250 was for an after-school program. All of these public service activities were retroactive from, well, in three of the cases, from January 1. Fire Tree Place would be for the current school year, from September 1st until completion. The Kappa and Fire Tree Place provides for salaries, and, but it, they must show that they benefit low mod and keep those records. I think out of the four subrecipient agreements, and was brought out in the, was mentioned in the finance committee meeting, were the requirements for the pass-through agencies. That's kind of the first section, just prior to the subrecipient agreements. But also, in the, in the last page of the subrecipient agreement, the additional requirement is the evaluation of risk of subrecipients' noncompliance. I mean, most of these agencies have done this in the past, but we do have to go out and assess whether they have the ability to provide the compliance activities that are necessary for those funds. Most of these funds are part of a larger project, and they get other funds from other agencies, so, but this is, has already been approved under the 2016 project. So this was reviewed by the finance committee.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy, on all four, please, from finance.
Finance reviewed all four pretty much together, and, and obviously, city council has seen and indeed approved this financing, or this funding, last year, so there's nothing too remarkable about it. The one thing to note is, right, that the reporting requirements are slightly more onerous this, in this cycle than they were in the past, and, and also, of course, that we only actually had one request from Lycoming County SPCA in 2017 for a subrecipient, for a subrecipient funding, which may well be related to the fact that it's precisely a year after these, we voted to give these folks this funding, that it's actually being made available to them, which is a bit of time to wait for, if you're, if you're applying for, in need for 2016, to know that you won't get it until 2017 is probably striking. So that was everything. Finance forwarded all four of these items to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Comments or questions on any of the four? Then, on the resolution related to Fire Tree Place, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the first of the four resolutions is approved. Next is the subrecipient agreement with SPCA. Mrs. Frank?
Resolution authorizing a subrecipient agreement between the City of Williamsport and the Lycoming County SPCA.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, a second?
So moved.
Second.
Anything further to add? Mr. Grado?
No.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the second is approved. The third is a subrecipient agreement with Kappa. Mrs. Frank?
Resolution authorizing a subrecipient agreement between the City of Williamsport and the Community Alliance for Progressive Positive Action.
Can I have a motion, in a second, to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing motion, second. Mr. Grado?
No.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that one is also approved. Next is a subrecipient agreement with YWCA. Mrs. Frank?
Resolution authorizing a subrecipient agreement between the City of Williamsport and the YWCA North Central Pennsylvania.
Can I have a motion, a second?
So moved.
Mr. Grado?
Nothing more.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that was fun. Next item on the agenda is a resolution rejecting city hall improvement project bids. Mrs. Frank, please.
A resolution rejecting bid for the city hall improvement project's police security project, be it hereby resolved that the city council of the City of Williamsport rejects the bid for the police security project in city hall submitted by Lundie Construction at a public bid opening on Monday, October 17th, 2016.
Can I have a motion, a second, to approve this rejection?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing motion, a second. Mr. Grado?
Yes, this, we're asking council's approval of the resolution rejecting the loan bid received at a public bid opening for the police security project for city hall. The bid came in at, the base bid, at $99,800. That was over our budget and estimate for that work. So what we plan to do is re-scope the project, do some of the work in-house, the electrical work specifically, and purchase some of the, purchase the equipment, the doors, actually. So we reviewed it, we reviewed it with Chief Young to get the minimum necessary in order to accommodate the security needs of the chief and his department. We feel that we can do it within the $50,000 that was budgeted. I mean, the plans were designed. We did have some additional card systems for the, for the door locks, plus cameras and, and video screens in both the watch commander and the police, the office manager's office. So some of those would be eliminated, as well as the, there was a window or at a counter in the lobby that we're going to eliminate, and actually put a Dutch door in the section of where Donna's office is, that would provide for the counter and access for people that needed to get in, into that location. So we are reviewing, we think, we believe that we can get the construction work for the wall and in the installation of the doors in for less than the 18.5, which is what the minimum is for going out for public bid, and, and we can be within the $50,000 budgeted by council. So, but this resolution actually rejects the loan bid that we have at the present time. This was reviewed by both finance and Public Works.
Thank you. Mr. Smith from Public Works, please.
Yes, we reviewed this today, and as Mr. Grado pointed out, the bid was way over what was projected, and we voted to reject that bid that came in and to bring it to full council with the rejection. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy?
Finance voted in the affirmative on not spending this particular bunch of money. But, yeah, not, not too much to note, other than that, it will certainly be good to keep the cost down. The only thing, I suppose, that should be pointed out is that the reason that we'd initially set a $50,000 price limit was because that was what our consultant had told us it would cost to, to do the work. So it's not quite clear why, I mean, maybe it's just some vague rate of the market right now, or something like that, why the cost came in at nearly double what we had, what we expected to have to spend. But regardless, if, if we think that we can still accomplish the work within that cap, then that's wonderful, and it's, it's good to know that we're not going to have to go over our budget, so. We've, we, finance forwarded this, forwarded this to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Comments or questions from members of council? Mr. Hedges?
I was not at the committee meetings earlier. I'm wondering if the police chief is satisfied, or I guess, obviously, that's a difficult way to put that, but is it workable with, with how you've worked it out with Mr. Grado and others?
Yeah, yes, what we've worked out is we'll still secure the area that, moving the agents over to the other side of the building, freeing office space up on that side, and still accomplish a lack of public access in and out, and with any prisoners or suspects we might have in custody at the time, so we'll accomplish the main goal that I have.
Okay. Thank you.
The question, it will comment in question, but, you know, part of the thought behind trying to limit the expenditure on this was, one, to accomplish the goal of the chief in terms of security, as he just outlined, and it, to me, and I think to all members of council, it is important that we at least accomplish that while we were going, undergoing a larger review of city hall facilities, and so that we could maintain as many resources as we could for deciding what the future direction, you know, not expending the money in one way in case we decided to go another way. So I still think that's prudent, and I'm glad we're going to be able to get to a workable solution in that regard. The question that I have for maybe both of you is, in this sort of more limited scope version of the plan, if later on, we decided, hey, let's go ahead and invest in city hall and, and go, and go back to the scope of work anticipated in the original design for the police department here, are most, if not all, of the things contemplated in the original scope still possible without expending extra dollars? Like you said, the security system and the cameras. We can, we, can we, could we still add those cameras once it's set up as you're planning now?
Yes, they can be added. I think, you know, we're kind of reevaluating the camera locations, whether they can be done separately. I mean, I think we can accomplish what the chief has asked. I mean, we do have to tie-
And the swipe card, I mean, I just used one of those examples. We could add the swipe card-
Right now, we're using locking keys, which they do now. I mean, every time they go into an office, they have to use the key system.
Sure.
I mean, part of this was the ADA access to accommodate the, the existing bathrooms. If we do a larger scope, we may be relocating them, plus upgrading the ADA bathrooms, as well as access from the front of the building, I think, is what the, the larger scope project would be.
But we're not going too far down one path that makes it harder to go back down the original path.
No, I think it's minimal, and these would, would be in effect, anyway. The locations of these partitions, which isolates both access in the rear where the watch commander is, plus, plus provides an area in, in kind of the lobby down the police hallway, they would still be in place like that, and you would still have access coming down the interior set of staircases. You wouldn't exit through the ramp area, you would exit out the front of the building now, so.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I, I mean, obviously, with the original goal of finding savings to maintain flexibility, I would hate to lose that flexibility accidentally by, you know, with the goal of saving money in the short run. So it sounds like-
We won't be-
It's a, it's an incremental step that allows us to make more holistic decisions that may include going back to the original plan and implementing those additional pieces. That's good to know. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution to reject the bid is approved. Next item on the agenda is resolution authorizing the Williamsport Bureau of Police to purchase one vehicle. Mrs. Frank?
A resolution of the city council of the City of Williamsport authorizing the Williamsport Bureau of Police to enter into a purchase agreement for one vehicle, be it hereby resolved that the city council of the City of Williamsport authorizes the Williamsport Bureau of Police to purchase one 2016 Ford Taurus police interceptor sedan vehicle, be it for the result that the appropriate city officials are authorized to execute any documents necessary to effectuate this contract.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, a second?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing motion, a second. How are you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, I bring for you this evening for consideration is a resolution for the Williamsport Bureau of Police to purchase a 2016- Bureau of Police to purchase a 2016 Ford Taurus Interceptor vehicle. We are now in need of a vehicle due to an incident that occurred on October 31st, where one of our officers was rear-ended by a drunk driver and subsequently pushed into a utility pole. And as a result of that accident, that vehicle is complete, is a total loss by the insurance companies. It cannot be repaired. So at this point, we are looking to replace that. We were able to find a vehicle. We're going to be transferring all the equipment over to maintain minimal costs, and we're basically asking for the difference to purchase the vehicle, considering the insurance company is going to be recouping the city for basically half of the cost of the, of the vehicle.
Okay, thank you. And it went to Finance and Public Works?
Yes, it was reviewed by the Finance Committee and Public Works Committee with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy from Finance?
Okay. Yeah, Finance forwarded this to the full body of council with positive, albeit somewhat reluctant recommendation. We, the, there are still some matters that it would be nice to see somewhat clarified regarding the insurance coverage for the initial vehicle. The city's deductible was, the city has a $1,000 deductible under our insurance policy. However, our officer was not at fault, and yet somehow or another, our deductible was still taken from the, our deductible was still removed from the payment. That is to say that we would have gotten 17, 931, I think you said it was, but the final payout is 16, 9. That doesn't seem to me to make much sense, given that we weren't at fault, that our deductible should play into it. And I would assume that we should be, being compensated by the insurance company of the driver, or in this case, I think it was the owner of the vehicle who was passenger in the vehicle at the time. Anyway, those issues, I think, should be resolved somewhat strenuously. I'm not quite certain, and Norm, perhaps you could advise us if there's any easy legal mechanism for that.
With regard to our own insurance company, whether we're at fault or not at fault, there's a deductible there.
Okay.
And what they pay is the fair market value of the vehicle.
Right.
Unfortunately, it's not replacement cost.
Yeah.
Whether or not the other driver had insurance or not, that's, then it would have to be reviewed.
The other driver does, did have insurance.
Then they would pick up the deductible cost, probably, and then reimburse our insurance company.
Was that, sorry?
That would be the process.
Yeah, okay. So that's.
Generally, most insurance companies have what's referred to as intercompany arbitration, and it would be resolved there.
Excellent.
Yeah, because we'd have subrogation claim against the other driver.
Okay. Yeah, it all seemed to make sense to me. It was just of some concern, I guess, how this was showing up, both against the city's insurance and, of course, in the final analysis financially. But.
Unfortunately, it's not a very quick process.
Nothing ever seems to be norm, especially when it comes to getting money.
Unfortunately, not.
But aside from that, Finance forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, Public Works?
I was brought to Public Works today, and we also ask about the insurance situation. And Captain Miller told us that the check is in the mail to us already. Correct?
That, I was, yes, the vehicle was picked up today, this afternoon. The company retrieved the vehicle, and they assured me that that check was in the mail to the city.
And we also ask about reimbursement. The, the purchase price is 29,195, setups $2,000, paints 800, decals 350, for a total cost of 32,345. And we also ask about whether we could collect from the insurance company on the setup, the paint, and the decals, due to the fact that, obviously, it wasn't our fault, and we have to have those things done to the car. And Captain Miller said he was working on that with the insurance company to try to obtain reimbursement from that. So we did vote in to send it to council with a positive recommendation to purchase that vehicle, because we do need a new one. However, when I went back to the office, I looked in the museum, and I came up with one of my police cars, and I thought, well, I wonder if we could get that for less money, the real one. So I called Ford Motor Company in Detroit and said, do you have any 1940 Fords with a 340 cubic inch engine in stock? And they said, we'll have to check. So they got back, and they said, as a matter of fact, we do. And I said, well, what would be that price on that vehicle? And it came to a total of $1,000 less than what we're going to buy this new one for. So we've already voted, though, to buy the new one, so I guess we're not going to get. This, this is really a nice one. This has got chrome, it has white wall tires, it has chrome hubcaps, and our new one doesn't have any of those amenities on it. So I don't know, maybe we should think about buying those two cars. Anyway, we voted with a positive recommendation. Now, there's one thing I did look at after our discussion today. The CoStar certification for Sunbury Motors actually ran out on April the 21st of 2016. So I think you're going to have to have a new sheet that's gonna, I hope they renewed that. If you look on the, the CoStar certification with Pennsylvania Department of General Services, their contract is good from April 21st, 2010, through 4/21 of 2016. So you may want to check with them and make certain they have a current CoStar's contract.
They do. I'll, I'll get you an updated sheet.
Okay. We did receive a picture of that vehicle, and I did go up and look at that in the impound garage, and there's no way that vehicle could be fixed. It's damaged well beyond repair. So we said, from our perspective on Public Works, we voted to go ahead and replace it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith. Comments or questions? One thing that probably came up in, in one of the committees or other, but the original resolution had a 2017, and this one has a 2016, in case everybody's wondering the change.
And the reason for that is that this, the quote that I submitted you, I received in early October in preparation of doing the budget for next year. So that's the quote I had. And after talking to Sunbury Motors, they were able to locate a 2016 on, on a lot that would be available to us immediately. And there's not 17s out yet floating around, so we have a 16 available to us, so that's why we updated the resolution to reflect the 16 model.
Sure. And was there a price difference because they're trying to clear out old stock?
They're, they're pretty close. There may be a little change, but it's pretty close.
Sure. And then, Mr. Lubin, from a process standpoint, on something like this, should we add a, an amendment on not to exceed, just to have that number within the resolution?
I would put that in, just to be honest.
Okay, can you give me, I can look it up here. What's, what number should we put in there for not to exceed?
I, I put 34. We should be good to definitely stay under the 34 number.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to amend to add to the first be it resolved statement in amount not to exceed 34,000.
So moved.
Second.
I hear a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on that? Mrs. Frank on the amendment, please.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and the amendment is approved. Any further comments or questions on the resolution? Mr. Henderson?
Just on a moral note, it's, it's interesting just to take note that, that this accident caused by a drunk driver affects not only that, their vehicle, but the city's vehicle, and consequently, the taxpayers at large. And it's just something to take note of. We don't realize the decisions that we make have big consequences, bigger than, than what we'd ever imagined, and affect far more people than what we'd imagined. So we could take a, a lesson from that. No.
Thank you. Any further comments? Ms. Mealy?
We did have a brief discussion at Finance, somewhat along those lines. Obviously, we are doing a fair amount in the county to address the, the drunk driving issues the county has. But I did mention to, to Mr. Miller that in general, I feel as though I'm seeing a lot of sort of poor traffic behavior within the city, a lot of running of red lights, a lot of just general bad driving and probably also bad cycling behaviors. And, and I, I think that that, being vigilant to that helps us to control all sorts of larger issues within the community. So I just, this, I can't imagine that if this person, obviously, if this person hadn't been drunk, they would never have rear-ended a police officer. But probably if they hadn't been following the police officer so closely, they wouldn't have done it either. And consequently, you know, acting and attempting to create good driving patterns within the, within the city population is probably also advantageous for us. Okay.
Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Noviello.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and that resolution is approved. Thank you, Captain Miller. Next item on the agenda is a resolution for an MOU between the city and emergency reporting. Mrs. Frank?
Resolution authorizing an agreement between the City of Williamsport and emergency reporting services for a software system. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Williamsport authorizes the Williamsport Bureau of Fire to enter into a contract agreement with emergency reporting for the Bureau of Fire reporting software system not to exceed $4,997 in one year, in year one. Here, hereby, the appropriate city officials are hereby authorized to execute an agreement between the City of Williamsport, Bureau of Fire, and emergency reporting and any documents necessary to accept the attached contract.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to approve this resolution?
Second.
Thank you. Chief Heckman, how are you?
I'm good, Mr. President, members of council. This week's been a whirlwind with this little resolution. We've been tweaking it up until I walked in here tonight. I think we got it ironed out. Before you have a resolution for us to enter into an agreement with emergency reporting for 2017, ceasing our current contract with Firehouse, both in Finance and Public Works today, I think you've seen the evidence that's mounted and why we, we need to switch. The paperwork alone is enough to prove its bearing and its cost. I will make one note, though, on the memorandum that we did give you a little bit ago, on the second full paragraph down that starts out the Firehouse enterprise, that last sentence where it, where it mentions transfer is to be dropped, it's already included in the budget for 2017. Mr. Polak has just advised me that when we walked in here tonight, so there will be no transfer needed. Again, I thank even Finance for working with us and trying to make this move forward in 2017 for the Williamsport Bureau of Fire. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith from Public Works?
We come to Public Works today, and actually, this is a culmination of something that Public Safety.
Public Safety started a few years back, and the reason it came to Public Works today was because we're facing a deadline of the end of the Firehouse contract at December 31st of this year. And if this was to happen, we wanted to get that implemented in plenty of time. Right after the police department put together the Spillman system, and those of us on Public Safety viewed the demonstration by Spillman, one of the things that we asked was, does Spillman have a module for fire reporting? And the answer to that was, well, we have a basic model, but really, it's never been perfected, and we're really not working on it at this point in time. Our goal at that time, if you remember back, was to be able to equip fire vehicles with laptop computers, and also now, it's capable of using tablets along with that, that when the firemen are responding to the scene of, let's say, of an industrial type of fire or a hazardous waste situation, hazardous materials, on the way, they could look at this building and find out the floor plans of the building, and also what type of hazardous materials or chemicals are being stored in the building. That was kind of our anticipated goal. Also, they would be able to access certain records from the police department Spillman system, which would help them in various firefighting situations where they may need some equipment or information from codes, or perhaps other types of incidents that may have occurred at certain locations. We did meet the Public Safety Committee, met at least twice with Firehouse people, and we were not very impressed with what we came back with. They could not integrate with the Spillman system, and they had no future plans, and really didn't want to try to develop a system to work with the Spillman. So the administration, Fire Department, decided to look elsewhere and came up with this particular company, and they found that it will integrate with the Spillman system. Also, if you remember back month, two months ago, we were doing a, a deal type of agreement with the Boys Town, where we acquired two laptop computers, which is going to allow two fire vehicles to be equipped with those laptop computers. And when this software is in place, records will be able to be obtained from Spillman. They'll also be able to obtain their own records that they've got. And then eventually, with the GIS system also in place, the location of chemicals, hazardous materials in certain locations, and other pertinent information that the firemen may need on the way to an emergency situation. So this is kind of the culmination of what we had started, I don't know, four or five years ago, whenever we started the Spillman system. So I, I want to commend the administration of the Fire Department for spending the time and effort and looking at finding a company that would be able to integrate with Spillman. And they've now found that. So we went over that. There was various questions that we had. There was very good presentation by Mark Killian and also by Todd Heckman on how this software will work, the advantages to it, how it would interface with the website. Also, going to have a direct link to the 911 center, and this can also be used for inspections, data response, pictures will also be able to be stored, the buildings, the interior of the buildings. So this is going to be a great asset for the Fire Department, as the Spillman system was for the Police Department. So after our discussion, we voted to send it to full council with a positive recommendation for purchase of this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy from Finance?
Finance also voted to send this to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. One copy-up between Finance's review yesterday and the information that we received today. Finance was, was told in our meeting yesterday that this switch from Firehouse to, to emergency reporting was, was cost neutral, or in fact, possibly even slightly cheaper than Firehouse. That is not the case. But even with that said, it's, we're currently spending about, excuse me, about $1,350 for Firehouse annually, and we're looking at an ongoing expense with emergency reporting of $3,100. So it's about an $1,800 difference for the functionality that we're going to be achieving for the compatibility with Spillman. I think personally, I would say that it's still well worth the, the, the increase in cost. However, I would also defer to any other members of the Finance Committee to, to, you know, to say how they feel, since yesterday, we were under the impression that it was more or less a cost-neutral switch.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Katz?
We did have that problem from the standpoint of what we had at Finance on Monday, and then what we had at Public Works today, as far as what the finances were. Finance, we were told it was an even swap. But then, I know you were confused with some of the, the figures and everything, and we were handed the, the correct figures. It doesn't, and also, in the beginning, at, at Public Works, we talked about the transfer, which thankfully, we don't have to do that at this point.
Correct.
That it will be going into the budget for next year. But I think we're all in favor of doing this, because it's going to be a much better system all the way around. And I do thank you for all the updates. I know you've worked hard on this for the past, I don't know how long, but I know for the fast, past 48 hours, you have been busting and trying to get this done.
Thank you.
But it's, it's, it's going to be great when you do get it. But when you do have this, what I do, the question, you're submitting this in January, to have it up for January. Will you be able to start using that immediately, or is it going to take the 45 days? No, that's the bill. The report.
January 1, the day that the contract of the Firehouse service leaves, we will be. be right online, emergency reporting will be operating within the system.
It's going to be able to operate immediately. That's one thing I wanted to ask you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allison?
The, yeah, I'm in favor of this as well, regardless of the cost, because of the enhanced value of the information and the availability to get it. And you referenced also that this is the system used by...
The current system that we're, we're looking into is used by the State Fire Commissioner's Office currently. Probably, we figure out, fifty percent of the departments in Lycoming County are using it currently. We know of a few more that are coming on. All the data that comes out of the nine-one-one center, Lycoming County reported, the state is using the same system. So it's just coming into the group. Everybody's information is going to share, and it'll be able to overlap and layer up. It's just, it makes, just makes perfect sense at this time to do this. We've been held back with what we've been using currently, and that's where we're here. This information is vital in the streets, and you sell the books.
Yeah.
Okay, can, just getting them out of the back of a truck should light it up about seventy pounds.
Yeah.
And that alone, and having it real-time at your fingertips. We could have used it last night up on Catherine Street.
Right.
Perfect example again. So justifiable.
The difference of eighteen hundred dollars or whatever per year is well worth the value of public safety and saving lives and property.
Mr. Noviello?
Just very quickly to echo some of Mr. Allison's comments as well. This, in my mind, is just another one of those steps into the 21st century that we've been long waiting. The idea, the fact that it kind of falls in line with other departments is an advantage for us, keeps us on the cutting edge of this kind of technology. Also, as we've been seeing over the last several months, we've become a bit of the hub for fire protection in our communities, and people and other agencies are looking to us, I think, in my respects, in my mind, to, to lead the charge here in some, in some ways. This is one of those ways. For the tune of another eighteen hundred dollars, I think, you know, if we save one life, that's ten thousand times more than, more than eighteen hundred dollars. So these things are valuable to us.
Thank you.
And one more tool in the toolbox for a fireman, and hard to, hard to not support something like this, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mrs. Katz?
One other quick question. The figures that you gave us, is this also including the two tablets? The two new tablets that you're going to purchase?
No, it is not this time. We have them budgeted, though, in the, also in 2015 budget other than that.
Just wanted to clarify that.
We're good. Thank you.
Mr. Henderson?
I know when we met about this in the Public Safety meeting, we were talking about some of those startup costs, like the tablets and other things. And I think I should note that the, the money that we're, that we've received from selling the pumper will help us with those startup costs. And so, you know, this, while it's never a good time to spend money like that, right now, there, there is a, a small amount that's come in that can help defray those costs, all of them, in fact. And so I think that's, that's important to make mention of as well.
That's a good point. I just want to add my thanks to both of you for putting this together. You know, there's plenty of lot larger expenses that we and other governments make that get questioned about how they add value to the taxpayer, and to have something that is a relatively small increase in, in expense that adds what sounds like to me, from untrained eye, quite a bit of capacity in terms of your ability to respond effectively in an emergency situation, I think is, is very clear value. So thank you for figuring out how to get from there to here. And if there are no other comments, then Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, that resolution for the MOU is approved as well. Next item on the agenda is certificate of appropriateness for HARB. We have two items this evening at nine-twelve West Fourth Street. We have a sign being created, and at four-fourteen West Fourth Street, I believe we're changing some colors on a sign. Can I have a motion in a second to approve those certificates?
Second.
With a motion, a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and those certificates are approved. Next item is except for filing. We have the Public Works meeting minutes of September twenty-seventh, Finance meeting minutes of September thirteenth and twenty-seventh, Recreation minutes of October twenty-fourth, HARB minutes of October eighteenth, and the Finance statement for October 2016. Can I have a motion in a second to accept these for filing?
Don't move.
Second.
Comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and those are accepted for filing. Next item is announcements. City Council will have an executive session on, for the purposes of litigation, a brief one, immediately following this meeting. The next regularly scheduled City Council meeting will be held on Thursday, December eighth, at seven-thirty, right here. But before that, the exciting budget sessions that are scheduled for Monday, December fifth, and Wednesday, December seventh, at seven PM, not seven-thirty, will keep us occupied for a bit, as Mr. Pavlock will soon attest. Other upcoming meetings include November twenty-fourth, well, that's not a meeting, it's that City Hall is closed, because we'll all be eating some turkey. Same is true on November twenty-fifth, because we'll be recovering from meeting from turkey or shopping. On Monday, November twenty-eighth, at noon, we have the Planning Commission meeting. At four PM, we have Recreation Commission, and at seven PM is the Landlord Association meeting. Monday, December fifth, at noon, is Fair Housing. And Tuesday, December sixth, is Public Safety at noon, and at three-thirty, the Finance Committee meeting. On Thursday, December eighth, at seven-thirty AM, a couple members of council will be joining the leadership Lycoming group at a meeting early that morning, and then they get to stay up late that evening for the meeting, the City Council meeting I mentioned. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have any comments from members of council? Mrs. Katz?
Just to remind everybody that this is Thanksgiving weekend, we do have Black Friday, but it's also Shop Small Saturday. Come and support your small businesses. That keeps your money in your community, and also keeps everything rolling in your community. So shop small Saturday, please.
Very good. Other comments? Hearing none. Mr. Mayor, how are you this evening?
Very good. Dr. President, Mr. Vice President, members of City Council, enclosed is my administration's 2017 budget proposal, which maintains all existing city vital services, focuses on improving public safety initiatives, and provides for resources to continue downtown revitalization efforts and other infrastructure improvements. The 2017 budget, as in the past, presents significant challenges because of mandated budget increases related to bargaining union contracts, rising healthcare costs, and the ongoing levy certification process. My staff and I worked hard to craft a budget to meet the city's needs by developing a budget questionnaire that provided an opportunity for all city departments, stakeholders, and City Council to provide input into the budget process. While it's difficult to present any tax increase, this year's proposed tax increase of point three-five mils is very modest compared to previous budget requirements. The city will continue to deliver effective and efficient services to the citizens of this great city at an affordable cost to taxpayers. The 2017 budget highlights and other significant initiatives are as follows. Initiates a public safety plan which provides more flexibility to assign police officers where and when needed. Therefore, more officers will be on the streets. Provides additional resources for the city's annual street resurfacing project. Incorporates a six percent increase of healthcare premiums. Anticipates a strategic investment in the city's Bowman Field Facility through a RACB grant. Budgets an investment of one million dollars for the levy recertification project and the City Hall improvement project. Enhances current recreational program and provides for a second full operating season related to memorial pool and two-park programs, and represents a net cost of less than one percent of the proposed general government budget. Provides funding for a Park Avenue planning study. Anticipates funding from Act thirteen in the amount of three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars and four-hundred thousand dollars from the Benicon Health Insurance surplus. Restores general government funding for the purchase of parks' equipment, technology upgrades, police vehicles, and street reconstruction projects. Assists Victorian Christmas as an economic development tool. Offers funding for a new city engineer to work alongside the current engineer, John Grado, until his mid-year retirement. The city administration looks forward to working with City Council to adopt the 2017 budget, and we hope everyone has a pleasant Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments from your administration? Comments from the general public? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.